Oh, yeah, y'all will need to turn your fire funs on.
Okay, I call to order the Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, planning and zoning commission meeting. May I have a roll call, please? Me and that I Lynn here.
Michael here.
Nobody on Zoom, okay. We're the stalwarts, it seems like lately. Please rise. I believe it is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which has one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay. Did everybody read tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Are there any questions or changes or anything? No, 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 no.
No.
May I have a motion, please, to approve?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Give the date.
Wednesday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
May I have a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Through little minutes of February twenty-eighth. Maybe like. Yeah, it's mostly was that. So does anybody have anything there? You may not hear. I don't know if you, if you from here, I, she said, I was.
I'm like, I'm pretty sure this is. Trying to track.
Do you have any corrections?
No.
Neither do I. I have a motion to approve the meetings of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the meeting of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I have second.
Aye.
Motion by Michael, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have declaration conflicts of interest? No. Anybody have any public comments out there? Is anybody on that little screen?
There's no one that's online.
Okay. Close public comment. Special presentations, we have none. Design, review, and land use public hearings. None.
No.
Discussion, direction items, mentoring forward, land use update, stats. Now stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so this is our really our only agenda item tonight, and it's something that uh, we had promised to bring to you and we have asked for, and so what we're sharing with you tonight is certainly not everything, um, but some good summaries and examples of the work that was done between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one on chapter sixteen. Um, this reflects, so there's a memo from January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, which summarizes many months of work that the planning commission and staff did. Um, looking at each zone district, each existing zone district in town. Um, the allowed uses, the existing conditions within those own districts. So Madison, when she was an intern in twenty nineteen, did a lot of research and uh, you, we've included some, uh, one of the PowerPoint presentations that kind of highlights some of those things. Looking literally at each lot in town, and what their existing setbacks are and what their existing lot coverages were. Just to try to get a feeling for what are our existing conditions and, and are, you know, just from the dimensional limitation standpoint, are we currently in the right ballpark for block coverage for Old Town Residential, for instance, or setbacks? And I think what we found is that there certainly were some inconsistencies and there were some um, places where we felt like um, lot coverages or impervious coverage could be increased. Uh, but for the most part, a lot of those things stayed the same where we spent a lot of our time and what this memo from uh, January twenty twenty-one really highlights is that we spent a lot of time on the use table and thinking about all the different uses that are allowed in different types of residential neighborhoods or the commercial neighborhoods. Um, so you know, the memo that I attached to this for this time was explaining that this work was done several years ago. We now have, you know, we were told to stop that project and start the community plan update, which is really the right order for things to happen. You take a large order look at what your policies are in town and what your vision is for town, and then you update your land use code so you can implement those things. Now we have a updated community plan and it gives pretty specific direction on, or at least recommendations on how to move forward with updating chapter sixteen. I think it's helpful and I'm glad that you guys showed interest in this. I think Jeff brought it up originally. Hey, we did a lot of work. Let's not throw that out necessarily. I think it's, you know, it's incumbent on staff primarily right now as we move forward to start going through some of these previous recommendations and figuring out if they still actually are relevant. I went through those today and highlighted a bunch of things that we were recommending in twenty twenty-one. Removing certain uses in zone districts or increasing uh, lot coverages in other zone districts. Uh, in some instances, we've already done those things. In other instances, we've recently gone through um, processes with you and the town council to take a hard look at um, residential uses in the one hundred block and first floor versus second floor, things like that, that don't really line up with what we were talking about three years ago. So um, I'll stop there. Um, it was good to go back and look at this, um, because again, I think a lot of the work, a lot of heavy lifting was done. Um, not all of it's going to carry forward, but I think it's a good place to start.
I went through too. I see some places changes have been made already. Um, and if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna, I don't think you were here for it. I don't even know who you're here for.
I wasn't here either.
Okay, so can we go through by section by section? I just some highlight things that I'd like to mention.
And handle this however you want. It's, this is.
Zone districts are one Old Town Residential. Um, I want to make sure for going forward that the changed club as member to membership organizations really works for us. I know at a council meeting a few weeks ago, I mentioned it to you. I said, I didn't bring it up. Um, I mentioned it to Madison. At the following council meeting, Terry did bring it up. So we want to make really sure we've got that right for the new code. Cause that caused a lot of issues back then.
Yeah.
Alright, you know, just for one minute. I was not here, so I might have misinterpreted this a little bit.
You did the same as me.
Uh, so I was uh, prior to just now, I was be- because some of the this January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, what I was assuming, because some of this stuff currently like as far as lock coverage and stuff had changed, so I was under the assumption that the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-one stuff had all been applied and then the, the, the maps from, you know, this stuff had not been applied, but uh, listening to Lynn um, start off with um, sure, I'll quit talking, but.
Yeah, maybe just level set, um, cause I was the exact same place as you and I.
Yeah.
Maybe you could just level set us of like, which of the documents has been a, like, none of them have a, okay.
I mean, well, I mean, as we go through, if you, if you want to go through zone district by zone district, we can do our best to pick out where things actually have changed, but for the most part, ninety-nine percent of these things that say changed, what that means is that we made decisions at, at this level, that those are the things that we wanted to change. It never made it forward to an ordinance or to the town council.
Yeah.
The lock coverage did change though.
Yes.
That did change.
Yeah.
And at some point, that went from forty to forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only thing that.
Well, I tried.
So Lynn's.
For five years, let's face it.
And if we don't cover them all tonight, I think, you know, we, we can go through all these and, and make sure that we bring back to you, these are the things that actually did somehow change, even though we postponed the project, we still felt it was necessary to move to council and say, hey, let's bump up the lot coverage and impervious coverage in some of our residential neighborhoods to incentivize the development of ADUs, which we haven't seen anyone really take advantage of yet. But nonetheless, those types of things changed. I think there was a change in um, lot and impervious coverage that was approved.
I think it went to what's on here.
Yeah, it, yeah, and the same thing.
I mean, we kept, we, this was a suggestion, but I think we implemented it along the way because I believe part of that had to do with the development of um. On Boulder Street where they were gonna get rid of the garage and add, yeah. Yeah. So I think that's about that time when we went through it and we did a.
Yeah, forty and forty-five.
Next use district, we did a increase in lot and impervious coverage. Um, so we can try to.
So there have been a few things. The one thing that I, it threw me until I reread this again and again, cause I kept going, wait a minute. Because you see the increases here, but there's nothing said about side setbacks. So if you wanted to know what the side setbacks were in our one, you'd have to refer to our current code.
Okay.
Okay. If you have that question, why is that missing in there? I mean, I wrote in here so that I remember that because side setbacks over the years have changed. But we did not suggest changing it at this point.
Okay.
Okay, to anything different than what's in there.
Okay.
There, there were a couple instances where we were recommending changes. Um, the PowerPoint presentation is a good reference too. Uh, because, and we can bring this up on the screen if we need to. Um, I don't mean to be jumping around, but you know, Madison went to the extent of looking at each of the, or you know, samples of each neighborhood and getting average setbacks for front, side, and rear existing conditions. And then we had a page that said, you know, Game Creek Residential, existing minimum lot size, uh, maximum lot coverage, impervious coverage, and then setbacks. And I think in most cases, those weren't actually proposed to be changed, but in a couple, they were proposed at that time to be changed.
That's some of what you got back there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then my other question under zone district or about the suggestion that I want really carefully clarified is changing home business to conditional use from limited and home occupation. It's not changing them, but it's really defining what a home business and what a home occupation are well. So that there's no confusion when people, they can do certain things.
Well, it would technically be changing it, cause right now they're both limited uses. They're not conditional uses, and so if I change them.
But I'm not saying that. I'm just saying in the definitions, when you look up home business and home occupation are really the definition. Cause I went to um, the dictionary and really there wasn't much of a difference in the dictionary. So we need to make sure our definition is clear so that people say, you know, some people think it's okay to bring a lot of people to their house and that's that's where this comes in. Some people you can work out of your house like an architect, but you can't come and sell, buy, sell things from your home. That's why I want to make sure we have it clarified. And then setbacks. South Town and Game Creek Residential's um, the same thing. And that was the only thing I had there. And that appears all, all the way through. That's why I want to make sure we've got it good.
Yeah. And can we just stop there for a second? I went back through these and I was highlighting stuff and saying, did I, why did we do this? Why would we make it harder for a home business to happen? And then trying to remember the conversations that we had that, you know, home businesses, they are defined as, as businesses that can see patrons at the site. Whereas a home occupation is the opposite, right? So it's a much more less intensive. I think our definitions already um, address that, but I think we made those change, this recommended change because we wanted to ensure that a home business with parking on site and other things, we got a chance to look at it.
It's conditional use. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but other, other changes that we were recommending, I was kind of flagging saying, well, that we may not want that anymore. I'll, I'll try to point those out as we go through, but.
Is there anything in those first two?
No.
Okay.
No.
Martin Creek. Um. There again, the same thing. The one that the bottom confuses me. Maximum lot coverage changed to twenty percent from not available.
There, there is no minimum.
There was.
There is no maximum lot coverage in Martin Creek at this point. They can build whatever they want.
Where is Martin?
It's like.
Out there with dirt road up there.
It's all over that.
Lot and Frank, uh.
Medina's.
Medina's lot.
Oh, I was thinking.
Yeah, I'm a stud.
See?
So, I think that was our recommendation and staff was to at least require some maximum lot coverage to preserve some. I mean, most of those sites are pretty hilly. Uh, I don't know about Ella's.
Well, and I don't think all of Ella's is annexed.
I think all of the others is annexed. Why do we add parks and playgrounds?
Wouldn't tell you. I don't remember.
Well, and because of the, the way those are, I don't see anybody ever.
Develop you, yeah. So, and that just means that if they got purchased, they could be.
We would want to maybe keep some of the open space because have you ever been up there? Oh, my God, it's gorgeous.
Gorgeous.
It's great, big, huge metal.
That line item use is recommended throughout different zone districts as adding it as a conditional use, and I think the thinking, at least for, you know, these neighborhoods, Pine and Boulder and Eagle Street, Eagle River Street. If there was to be a park, I think we'd want to look at it from the standpoint of impacts to the neighbors. I, I don't, that's all I could think of is why we added that.
People traveling there in cars as they're.
Parking and noise and, I don't know.
Yeah.
Cars are generally a good thing, but.
I think those are the general recommendation.
Yeah.
I think.
Let's blame China.
So this is, I just want to make sure I know this, what this Martin Creek Residential. It's like if you go up.
King Ranch Road.
But not King Ranch Road. If you're coming at it from this angle, if you have to cut over a water tap, this route, um.
Nelson.
Ella's right, the top and up behind my store.
Yeah, no.
And there's two homes up there. There's Ella and there's um.
Okay, it's out.
The other one is in town.
Go past like the Sullivan's and pass the Molly McDean, you take that road.
Take that road out. Yes, one of those lots up there is Ella's, actually two of them is, but one of them is annexed, the other one isn't. Um, and then there's another house up there that I don't think is, I just want to make sure I knew where, yeah. And if you go up King Ranch.
I do, right. I don't think so, cause I know how that developed because the gentleman who built I Ella's house way back when. Part of what he did for was a couple acres of land up there.
Hmm.
And then he sold it and I can't think that guy's name right now. I should know it. He, his son read it in our book thing this summer. Yeah, I can. He's a financial advisor. Anyhow, he maintains that road a lot too. He's really a good guy. He's anyhow, so he, yeah, I can't think of it. Or something. Um, anyhow.
Miller?
No, Miller's down there.
Yeah.
I don't know. Miller's at the other end. Okay, so that was the only thing I had there. Do you have anything there in our three? Any comments from you?
I know.
Okay, our four, Cross Creek. Um.
This was kind of where Jeff and Terry live. So some of the larger lots along the river, um.
Lot coverage increased to forty percent from twenty-five percent.
That was one that I flagged and Madison and I talked about it this afternoon. I can't remember exactly why we did that. But it is interesting because if you go through the PowerPoint presentation that is later in the packet, the average lot coverage for those lots, um, so everything north of the trout club everything is seventeen point eight-five percent.
I have saw that.
So it's below twenty. I don't know why we're bumping it up to forty as a recommendation.
Question for me to ask is what's the availability of lots down there? I suppose if you did a tear down, you could review.
Yeah, but you know, pretty, yeah, I don't, and I think your thinking was perhaps it's because everything else was forty percent generally in residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that if your percentage and certain stuff, if you have a you know, forty thousand foot lot, you know, like, we're like forty percent is, you know, a big, you know. I think your, I think your lot size, you would want your, your coverage sort of based on some maximum square footage or something.
And so we might want to revisit that.
Yes.
Right?
That's what I flag.
Numbers, the, uh, no.
Okay.
No.
Our five, Cross Creek South.
That's basically.
So that's across the highway from there then.
No, that's.
Oh, that is the trout club.
And the reason why we made some significant changes there, um, to minimum lot size, lot coverage, impervious coverage is to reflect the existing development that had occurred that was not in conformance with the zoning.
Cause it was so close to the river.
So close to the road, those lots were tiny and the lot coverages were. Um, so we were trying to kind of and again, none of this has actually happened. We need to consider this moving forward. But we basically created a whole new zone district just to recognize those that development.
And setbacks to on those.
Yeah.
Okay.
My question, biggest question there though was maximum impervious coverage changed to sixty percent not applicable.
Right.
Why? So we didn't have one?
Cause there was no minimum, maximum impervious coverage and the sixty percent was, was intended to recognize what's built there today.
Oh, okay, to recognize what's there.
And to maybe put some bookends on any future expansion. I don't see how anyone in those units could actually you know, make additions or expand, but.
Somebody might want to try.
That's right.
Next, our six multifamily new zone, where? My biggest question.
That was the enclave, townhomes, and.
Cross Creek.
Cross Creek.
Yeah. What, oh, Cross Creek, like the trout club and things? For the ones outside in Lloyd Park. Cross Creek is down in that area.
Is it the two duplex, the duplex?
The duplex down there?
Yeah, it's the Lloyd Park. So right where we were talking about the Cross Creek Trout Club, there's a duplex and a fourplex. Um, those were included in the multifamily.
What about the ones that are um, more in town that are also new? Are those included in that? It's like a cross. Um, so it's like.
Eight fifty, fifty-one.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you take a um, duplex. This side of the road and there, no, like two sets of fourplex, I think. Or are they two sets of duplexes there?
There's two sets of duplexes at eight fifty-one.
Okay.
Two fifty-one, north, south, and eight fifty-three, north, south, or something like that.
There's a long driveway, there's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's an L, yeah.
There was, there is a little chunk of trout club that is multifamily that we had included in the our six. Thanks.
So this is the fourplex here, even though it only shows three now, right?
Is that the one at the very end to the north?
It's to the north, right? As you turn in on the right, it's the only one on that side of that road. Uh, and then this duplex, which I think actually doubles as their I think part of the duplex is actually owned by the Child Club Association.
Yes, there's a clubhouse in there.
Yeah, so I think, I think this is the clubhouse.
I don't remember what it was for, but it was a meeting, something we had down there. Somebody did. It wasn't just for fun, in other words. We were allowed to use the space in the meeting. Okay, so accessory dwelling as a limited use. Accessory dwelling units as a limited use. So then my question on that becomes, why would you want, if you're saying those buildings are already overbuilt for the land that they're on, why would we want to allow for accessory buildings?
I don't know if they're overbuilt, but what they built didn't.
I mean, not the side that had the closest to the river.
Yeah, and maybe that's I don't, again, I don't remember our exact conversations about that. Um, but if the, if it was a limited use and one of the things that we wanted to look at was proximity to the river, or if they had somewhere else on their property that accessory dwelling unit could fit, um, or if it's accessory dwelling unit within the building that's already there. Maybe that was.
Within a building, I could see it, but even if you're thinking the enclave, the same situation. And then townhouses, the same situation. I could see it if it was a, a lock off in a building that you were renting, but not a separate building.
Let's flag that. It's luckily it never got adopted. So if we don't, if we come back to this and say, well, that doesn't really work. Um, then we don't have to do that.
And it could also, the accessory building also could have been things like trash enclosures rather than just those gated off areas that the enclave has, if they wanted to actually build a building, that would be considered an accessory building. Was the front of the property rather than in the back.
Trash enclosure would be considered accessory building.
It's a building.
Well, it's, we, if we had accessory buildings and accessory dwelling units, both as a limited use.
Right. But the accessory dwelling units doesn't have to be within accessory building.
Correct.
So.
I'm just flagging this and saving you to reevaluate it.
And it could be that a lot of it, since we were creating our six as an entirely new zone district, we weren't really amending a different zone district. It could be that we just kind of took a lot of the zoning from existing zone districts and just applied it to.
Six one. Yeah, cause your height and your setbacks are okay.
And just keep in mind, this is one of those things that really doesn't align between what we, where we were headed before and what, what our community plan now has for recommended zoning and future land use. Right now, there's no recommendation to create a multifamily zone district. It's all residential zone districts and mixed use. Which would make it easier if we don't have like a separate multifamily zone district that doesn't really apply anywhere else.
Okay, C one, Grouse Creek. Um, I just wanted to clarify under the dry cleaners thing, when it's a storefront, that means literally you drop it off and pick it up, but you cannot process it there. Okay. Maximum impervious, maximum impervious changed to eighty percent again, that one.
Yeah.
Grouse Creek. So is that the business centers outside of town?
So they can't have any flea markets?
We, we everyone had it in for flea markets.
And they can't have any festival marketplace? I mean, so that means like the whole like market that they did there's a couple of weekends ago and they had a live band.
Weird.
Yeah. It was the coffee house, the whiskey and Ellen Witch and my girl, they have like, it was like to prove all the businesses and then they like a live band and like are you looking at me like I'm crazy?
I don't know why we, flea market, everyone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that at the time there was, there was a consensus that flea markets generally don't happen and we're not sure where they would be appropriate.
Connotations weren't good.
Yeah, so.
Marketplace.
I'm not sure about that one. I don't remember.
What is it?
I don't, I don't even know what that is and I don't remember why we are recommending to remove it.
I mean, I think this is for me, just my, I don't know, we're just things that we should look at again in the future, like we've heard pick lifting and shifting. This is one that I would question that whole area right now because of the cost of rent. Seems like it's becoming a vital foothold.
The only issue I see, if you're talking about those business centers, that place already has issues with parking.
That's the only thing I can think of too.
That would be something we'd have to look at there, cause you do a big market there. Where are they going to park along the highway?
Lot of parking on the highway.
Need more.
I mean, all of the skiers actually park across in that parking lot right now in the dirt, dirt lots adjacent to that old parking center.
Is that where they're parking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've watched them. The, the eight years uphillers, if they don't want to park, they can't park close enough to the lot, they park across the street in the, um, in that business during the weekends, cause most, some of the businesses are closed down.
Oh, yeah.
And then there's the dirt lot when you come into that, into that place, there's the, all those dirt, the dirt lot that's to the left. You don't go into the lot, there's the dirt lot on the left. So all the skiers have been parking there starting this winter because.
But those are issues we need to look at in that area.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, starting along the highway.
Thanks for flagging that. That's.
The festival market. The festival marketplace thing. It probably it could be interpreted, you know, I, I think it's a good thing. I think that we probably want to, we would need some type of definition.
Maybe.
Because somebody could interpret. It, it could, it could be random interpretation though.
Well, if we removed it, that means that we had it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but in there right now still, but if we're looking at maybe adopting some of this in the future, I would say maybe let's like talk about that one.
Maybe we could talk to the owners of those businesses to buy the lot that's empty at the left as you drive in there.
It was a lot of money for that lot.
So here's.
Yeah.
Here's our definition of.
Parking lots.
Festival marketplace means a retail center located in a unique architectural setting with a mix of small specialty shops and crap and carts, offering one-of-a-kind merchandise with an emphasis on gifts and crafts supplied locally for food offerings.
All right, but for Grouse Creek, they're probably, we never envisioned that to happen and that's. Right. That's like, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
So that, but is something that we should further discuss when we get there. C two.
Old Town. Oh, sorry. Don't go. One more thing on that thing is it removes roadside stand as a use. What is the definition of roadside stand as a use?
Be right there. Be right there.
I'm glad it's there currently.
I think we were relating to that guy who's up on the hill going to Red Cliff with the rock shop, pulled off to the side.
That is exactly what was brought up during that discussion.
No, but I definitely see the, um, tree maker on the side of Boulder's Road. Makes, um, one of the mini trees. Bonsies, yeah, he sells bongs.
There's this guy that pulls off the road in one section up there and he's got tables out there on the back of his truck and sells all kinds of.
Roadside stand means a temporary structure designed or used for the display or sale of one of a kind artwork and crafts. Nursery, greenhouse, garden or other produce.
Ooh, but does it have to be on a major highway? Or is it anywhere?
No.
Ooh, that, I don't, I mean.
You gotta let kids sell lemonade.
Whoa, no, I'm saying in that.
No, thank you.
So you wanna maybe keep that?
Again, in that circle, so you have the Italian store sells like. Food on tables during these events, so does that one witch, so does the coffee place.
Alright, but they're based out of a brick and mortar store, so I don't know that they would be considered a roadside stand.
Okay, if, because they're not independent, right?
I don't, I don't know where someone would do a roadside stand, because there's no road. So, I mean, maybe it's.
Okay, I'm just saying.
But I, I flagged it to reevaluate that and really think about what that means. And maybe that leads to a change in our definitions and our. Our line item uses, maybe it's not a roadside stand, but it's a outdoor market or, I don't know.
Definitely growing some strawberries this summer to sell. But lot, wait for you to see, oh, well, you, mine are beautiful.
Really? Where do you grow them? In the yard. I've tried strawberries, peonies come in and eat them. My chipmunks lovely. I have raspberries, you leave those alone pretty much, the birds get those. Oh, great, tried to do that, it didn't work. I wanna try that.
Okay.
Okay, Old Town Commercial, South Town, remove club as a use, good, but we need to, there again, clarify that. Um, remove drive up through establishments as a use. I think that was a good thing to do. I mean, I just highlighted a few things. Health medical offices, permitted use in existing Old Town Commercial Zone. Which I don't think is bad, but shouldn't we say something like second floors only?
I don't think we had that at twenty twenty-one, I don't think we delineated between second floor and first floor.
Gotcha. I mean, you don't want that on your. Unless it were like somewhere like the building Tim has.
Well, Old Town Commercial is across the river, so, uh, saloon. Eagle River and, and the building that Tim has, um, shopping hall. A couple of lots on the two hundred block. And a few lots on the four hundred block. That's all Old Town Commercial is. Yeah, she. Pretty much.
So, I have no problem with bringing a health facility and it's just where we wanna have it.
Right.
Uh, permitted use, conditional use in Old Town Commercial. Change theaters, meeting rooms and convention centers to a permitted use from a conditional use in existing Old Town Commercial Zone.
I think that was kind of harkening back to the days when the Scarab used to be a movie theater.
Move it was a movie theater when I moved here to town.
And so I think allowing that again, I think that's where that came from.
But convention center?
That I think convention center is part of the title now.
To me, I see that as a huge thing, meeting rooms, I don't.
Put ourselves in the map by having the smallest convention center and.
With no party.
Oh, God. Um. Min- minimum, okay, where am I here? What district? Are we still Old Town Commercial? So we're on the other side of the bridge?
Old Town Commercial, this side of the.
Increase to a ten feet setback from zero. Front yard. Which I have no problem with, but I just wanted to bring that up, because it went from zero. I always quite questioned a lot of those one zero. Um, and decreased from twenty feet in existing Old Town Commercial Zone District.
Where's that back?
What decreased? The other half of that's bottom bullet.
Just as a point of clarification, it's still zero. For a front setback in the Old Town Commercial, because we never changed it. So this is one that we might wanna.
Oh, so it was twenty feet? No, because the first line says increase to ten.
I think so, twenty feet, decrease from twenty feet in South Town Commercial Zone District.
You know, for, it's some, something on that, you know, like. What do we know? Like some of the existing buildings. Yeah, yeah, and, and all, in all areas. We, if, gotta figure out if. You know, if grandfather that man, what's gonna happen as far as that goes, because. I know that we have, that, that Main Street like makes a, makes a huge, you know. Main Street moves as well, uh, for example, like backcountry wings, like the actual sidewalk. Uh, is the sidewalk in front of that building is actually. On, on that property, uh, to where, you know. Four or five buildings down, the sidewalk is actually in, in the. Seen it right away, so, eh, there's just a lot of variables in there that. I, I think it's a great thing if you're. You know, if nothing's there, but I think just have to look, look it was, how, how that applies.
I think we took the average of Old Town Commercial and South Town Commercial of zero and twenty and came up with ten.
That's where I was going, I was just gonna ask.
Yeah.
My, my mind was processing it. Okay. C three one hundred block, that's downtown commercial zone where I'm at.
And we've already. You know, did all.
Remove laundries. That may be a question coming up. So, we need to look at that.
Yes, we've heard.
That was after the meeting Monday night, I heard that, so that was why I brought that up.
But we removed, it, did we actually, because we've done the hundred block, did we actually remove radio and television?
I don't think so.
Okay, it just is on here.
Most of the changes that were made in the one hundred block as far as allowable uses had to do with. Um. Accessory dwelling units, um, single family duplex and other residential uses. And clubs, we obviously dealt with the definition of clubs and where they could be allowed and stuff like that. But a lot of this has not been done.
I, I was looking at a unit right soon to open up my television.
Television and repair store. I'm teasing, I know you are. I'm like, I don't see you doing that in there.
I would achieve a.
Plus it's going from style, isn't it? If it wasn't, I have some things that I could have done. Add pub, added public events and mass gatherings is limited use. I think that needs to be furtherly looked at. And not done anything to until we decide what we're gonna do about increasing parking. Because you start doing that, our, and we lose our parking lot, we're the creek.
Right.
So, there's no sense in allowing it until we figure out where we're gonna put the cars that would come for it.
I mean, we already allow our Fourth of July celebration, the mid turn market, I mean, all of these would bother their public events.
Right, and we already do, but I don't think we need to, well, you think those two long in there, you mean? So then could we state Fourth of July and mid turn market and not allow for an increase in type of gatherings?
Oh, then we would never be able to do anything like ski touring again or any other town event if we were only specific to those two things.
Just get parking meters, man, we'll be alright.
If people wanna come together and say we'll find a place for it.
I disagree, I disagree what that's gonna do to the residential neighborhoods.
And I think small town and people choose to live on the one hundred block or.
Well, in that area, yes, but what will happen is enforcement off of areas eventually. I'm process, proceeding with something on this and I will get it together and then go further. Um. Minimum front yard setback decreased to zero from ten feet. Now, that is the one hundred block. Could we not change that from the one hundred block, BRB to five feet? Just setbacks off of the sidewalk.
Five foot minimum, twenty foot maximum, yes.
Okay, so that should be. Scratched in here, right? Um, mixed use one, that's all, baby, mixed use. That's the only one in here. Did we not do mixed use two and mixed use three back then? Well, three, we don't have one, no, right?
We don't, we just have mixed use right now.
Yeah.
Think all of the mixed use districts into one, so we wouldn't have multiple.
Okay. Breakfast as a use, why did we do that? It says remove bed and breakfast as a use.
And so, where does that say there?
There isn't, I'm asking that. Because I'm assuming that the midterm in is in a mixed use area and is a bed and breakfast.
That's on the four hundred block.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Well, that's on Main Street, I think that's commercial.
No. It's mixed, mixed use front and back of.
Actually, but they, when they sold those two units, do they convert those? Would those still be in the use? And some of our streets in the use.
All the streets in the use.
Okay, yeah.
Front and back. Front and back, the only commercials on the other side of twenty-four and.
Mixed use.
From shopping.
Mixed use. So that, we already have it in mixed use and we're saying removed. So that needs to be something we flagged.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because back in the day, Spencer's house, the house next to it as well, was part of.
The inn.
The inn.
Yeah, there were.
And it was a bed and breakfast.
Front and back on the river, and then, um, our unit sometimes is used as part like, I mean, cause Rico did.
Okay, flagged it.
Where is the Cross Creek mixed use zone? So then that increased to seventy percent from forty percent. And forty-five percent in existing Old Town mixed use zone, that makes sense then. Maximum impervious coverage changed to eighty percent. Did you see anything? Well, you were thinking differently. Railroad, oh, Railroad Transportation District, is that what is there now?
We currently have a railroad, or we currently have a transportation district, it's not specific.
But is that where all the additional uses are in those buildings or?
No, I think it's specific to the railroad and the railroad right away. I think those are, we're still.
It follows the rail line and stops at, um, the Game Creek Pewee Holdings Zone District.
Game Creek, that, that way north.
Yeah.
Can you also flag, I'm sorry, go back to the mixed use ones.
Yeah.
And it's the third bullet on the second page, um, changed restaurants to a conditional use from a permitted use. In, it says in existing Cross Creek Missed Use District. And so what that's confusing me is because the inn actually has. Like a mini coffee shop in the summer, and so. That would, would that call, they serve breakfast in there? I don't know.
Well, it's considered a bed and breakfast.
And you can do walk in off the street, get coffee during the summertime, they offer coffee croissants, breakfast.
Interesting. So, when I put together this memo, if I qualified that. Like in existing Cross Creek Mixed Use District, that meant that that was, cause the, the. This memo is a combination of multiple districts, obviously, mixed use one was Old Town and Cross Creek together. So if I qualified it, it meant that that was the only place it was changing, because it was already a conditional use in Old Town Mixed Use.
Okay, thank you for that.
So, okay, obviously, that's still something we can totally flag, but I was just. It's already conditional use from. The Old Town portion where the inn is, so.
Anything else?
I just wanna read this out loud so that if I'm, everybody. Makes sense. Maximum lot coverage increased to seventy percent from forty percent. In the existing Cross Creek Mixed Use Zone District. Where is that?
State Master Building?
That's the state master, that's the only thing. So then.
Well, the state master building in those duplex lots, I think. Those duplex lots don't actually have a color on her.
And did that actually go into affect?
No.
They just developed, they just started finishing the unit on the old steam ass lot.
No, not the. Not the, not the old, not the Alpine Glass, well, Alpine Glass Building, I'm talking about their actual like storefront at the, the. Seventeen hundred block or something like that.
Okay, got it. So not the one that's about to be done.
So then, my question is, the commercial building. In the Midtown project, what is that, is that?
That is downtown. A South Town, it's either commercial or residential, it's mixed use.
So we were back to, are you, is that okay? Can we go back to railroad transport?
Yeah.
Um, added access buildings as a permitted use seven. This is only if we ever get the ability from the railroad, right?
Well, this is for the railroad, if they wanna put any accessory buildings there.
This will relate to what they could do. Thank you.
Can we put a bunch of other? I mean, can we restrict that?
I think they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, they can do whatever they want.
Okay.
They can?
I know, I mean, can't we just say like, I mean, so they don't have, they have no dimensional standards?
I can't remember.
No, they currently don't have dimensional standards.
They currently don't have any.
And that's, I think that's all that's saying is there currently are no dimensions.
Right, we didn't try to come up with anything for them yet, cause we didn't get that far.
There are effectively no a lot of uses on those properties unless they come through a community process.
Okay, fair.
So the first part starts here and goes up to game trail. Where's the planned unit development area?
Yeah, the PUD holding zone. Is what. Well, there's the rail lining, which is kind of distinct, and then there's that chunk of land that stretches from mid turn north over to. Um, the area around, uh, the turntable for the Mexican restaurant.
Oh, the Mexican restaurant is part of that, okay. No dimensional standards. P F L I. P F L I.
P fly.
P fly. Uh, indoor storage, so light industrial public facility zone, where is that? Is that our water tank or?
No, that's public works.
Public works.
In cemetery and that.
Did it include the cemetery?
I don't think so. It would include the bike park.
Is that where, yeah, I think.
The public, the bike park, I think was maybe. The parks and open space. Cause that also includes lineset and Malite.
But that wasn't public facilities, so I don't think it included a little bit.
But Little Beach is talking about the expansion, so what would that be?
I think that would be open space.
Do you need an zoning provision?
No.
We do.
No.
Like in zoning on beach, I think.
This is it, I mean.
Or cemetery. Alright, but if you go.
Yeah.
Just a little swap, a little swap.
A little swap, well, that was for the cemetery.
We don't have zoning for Little Beach, so that's something we're gonna have to add.
Yay, we found something else. And that was that one night.
We are, we stand corrected, um, that is the Eagle River Character Area South Recreation and Open Space, Open Space Zone. Eagle River Character Area. So in the.
So it is a zone.
It is a zone, but we created it after the post twenty twenty-one.
No.
No, this was prior to that, but.
It's a character area, so it's been in place since at least two thousand eight or nine.
Okay.
I just never looked at this map because nobody are asking.
Even in our. Our recommended zoning maps, we're not calling out its own district, but.
Yeah.
So.
I think probably because Pedro was doing that separate. So that was probably why I separated it out.
It's a good theory. Missed it entirely. Okay.
Uh Malloy Park Facility Zone.
So.
Kiev.
That's the town facilities, the water treatment plant.
That's just the treatment plant.
If I remember correctly.
It says that water treatment facilities as a permitted use. Talks, yeah. Um but my only question, and then it has setbacks, which I don't understand if that's what's there.
Because they could have a bath, cause this didn't.
They could have a building back there.
Bathroom.
Now, when we got that land, if I remember correctly, part of the size of the land we got. Was a little bit overdone, so that if they wanted to put up like a fourplex for employee housing, like we could. Not that we have the money to do it.
We've also talked about, you know, diversifying public works, maybe putting a public works building over there so that. Not all of our equipment is across the river, so if that bridge ever goes out, we actually have equipment this side of the river. Michelle has certainly been looking into things like that on that, near that property.
So that would relate to why we have setbacks. All, you know, um although there, you'd have to have multiple buildings to have setbacks. But maximum impervious coverage is no limit.
Apparently, I don't think that was a recommendation. Like that's existing.
Right, cause I would have said change from no limit or change from something to something.
Cause we're right along the creek, it'd be nice to have some water going back into it. And then, here's one of my negatives. Linear feet is the length of a lot, right, what is the width, cause it never mentions width in here.
Be the, the linear feet, so if you had a twenty five foot by a hundred foot lot, the twenty five foot would be the linear feet. That's the frontage.
So then what's the length?
I don't think we get into that, we don't require lots to be a certain depth. We just require them to be a certain width, so they front on the road. And we have breaks in lot frontages every so many feet.
Because, yeah, because the lots are already in most places. Plated, okay.
So they subdivide, the length probably isn't going to change, that would be the width that would change, and so we don't want somebody subdividing a two hundred foot lot by. I don't know, fifteen feet, whatever gets into five thousand square feet in a weird.
Shape, shape, yeah. We have enough of those weird shaped lots.
We do.
Parks Recreation, oh, was there anything you had Scott?
I was just reading up on the existing Malloy Park Public Facilities Zone. Uh it says the Malloy Park Public Facility Zone is located west of Cross Creek and currently accommodates the town's water treatment plant and related uses. So yeah, we should probably have some lot coverage maximums out there and.
And take a look at that impervious.
Yeah.
Not having nothing. In the middle of the forest.
Right.
Okay, OS one Paro Parks Recreation and Open Space Zone District Lions. And Malloy Park Recreation Open Space, tell me Lion said park.
That's the bike park area.
I did, I've done that hike once, but. In open space zones, does, I have nothing there, anybody else? Scott?
Only to keep in mind that I think most of these. Zone names is, are probably out the window.
Oh yeah, definitely, people would not know.
Did you really remove roadside stands? But has it already been removed?
Pretty much nothing except for. Building coverage and impervious coverage in residential zones, so it's been touched.
And on one hundred block.
Only because kids like to set up lemon hits, like lemonade stands.
With strawberries. I don't think that's the intent is to. What I'm saying is that I don't, I wouldn't constitute a lemonade stand as a roadside stand, I think it's more of a commercial. Somebody from Palisade bringing their peaches here and setting up shop every day for five weeks. Selling peaches on the side of the road and, you know, they.
Yeah.
So.
Partying on potentially sensitive land.
Yeah, I, and I would hope most parents wouldn't let their kids set up a lemonade stand on Highway twenty four, but.
No, I'm saying it's based, that parks and open the recreation place. This is by the bike park or the base of the covered lines end, which.
That doesn't make any sense.
Take one there with lemonade stand.
But kids with lemonade stands don't come to us asking if. Yeah, they just put up their lemonade.
They do it at the bus stop and across from the shop.
Oh, okay, that's a good, that's a good place to have that, cause people come on and follow us.
Or was, I don't know if I'll do it again, cause it's years ago when he was younger. And um Gina Hawkeye's grandchild did, wants to know that kind of thing. But it was five dollars a glass, so.
Oh yeah, it's no longer the like twenty five cents, fifty cents there, and they're charging steep prices these days. Five dollars plus.
I sent God a fifty dollar tip on Tugel Mayo Golf Course. In his lemonade stand, cause they golf, they had stopped the golf carts.
You know, you, you get those carts with uh those guys who have enough alcohol in them, they'll give you plenty of money.
Say, give me anything to, yeah.
We've got chips in the store since we're on sale. I got one today, Jean got one last week, and I got one a couple of weeks ago. I have never.
Why are people tipping you?
Because things are on sale and they know it's. Nice.
I see.
They know you're, you're not making profit. And it's regular customers. But um, so, but I thought that was interesting.
That is interesting, cause I wouldn't think to do that on like regular retail.
Yeah, yeah. They know you're a small business and there's, you know, that, at least that's what they've said, I said, you don't need to do that, oh, yeah, 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 you're a small business. Okay, I'll take lunch. I mean, that's like five bucks or ten bucks, but even then, you know, I've always thought when you go to places and you say. I would like that roll and a cup of coffee and they expect a tip. And yet, when you come into a retail store and you give them all the service, helping them find what they want. Checking them out, putting in a bag, wrapping in tissue, nobody tips you, you know, I would never ask for a tip, but I've always thought that's a weird. Conservation Land Zone District Cross Creek Recreation and Open Space, so.
Yeah, you're right, we did. Recognize the conservation use then.
Lot of stuff changes, like three or four years ago there. Lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Federal lands, no uses were added or removed, there are no uses in the zone dis. Where is that, everywhere around us?
Yeah, well, no.
Yeah.
Hmm Dow Junction. Um, some land behind the water tank. We are, but we don't have the. Ability or purview to start zoning federal land outside of our. These are just areas that have been annexed to town, that are federal.
And we're also border, you know, behind the one hundred block, and then it's a south town. Next to Balden, behind Balden.
Yeah, we're pretty much surrounded by.
And some of those are in town. Like the Forest Service site at the eleven hundred block.
Right.
Peach thing.
Yeah.
The one that maybe seat up might take over for housing.
Okay, questions for planning commission, explain this first one, please?
I think those were questions for the planning commission four years ago.
But what, what does alternative energy sources mean?
Uh wind, solar.
Hydro.
Hydro.
Also would be a piece of land and only did that. Like you see fields of solar light.
Could be the ones to put solar or a wind turbine in their. Yard.
What this question, I said, break down like the county does, the county has in their land use. Table for residential zone zoning. So everything from rural agricultural zoning up to um more dense, single family neighborhoods. They break down um roof, rooftop solar from. Uh ground melted solar, and they break it into sizes, and whether it's a special use or it's a permitted use by right. Um same thing with uh wind and um hydro, micro hydro, so little. Micro hydro plants in streams, if you have a stream running through your property or something, you wanna generate energy, so they kind of break it down into things that. Don't have to go through a public process or anything like that for small scale, alternative energy.
Called the micro what?
Micro hydro. Yeah.
She was, go ahead.
Uh I think that was the question that we discussed at that time, was is that something that? We should bake into our uh use table? To, you know, either allow more of those things or make it somehow something that you wanna review, what's the? How do you break down those, or how do you have the thresholds of what size installation needs to have review and what doesn't?
Cause if you'll notice in the different zone districts, we have in several zone districts, added alternative energy production as a limited use. So that would just be kind of breaking it down even more.
Is the cemetery not its own district? That's what I was.
We've written an ordinance that has uh the creation of a zone district for the cemetery. Um and we just heard back from Richard this week or.
Last week.
Last week, but he finally reviewed it, so we can bring that forward.
And the reason for it.
And Pedro is.
And they came through. For building, which you guys reviewed. But we have no zoning.
So we need to be able to, in the future, okay.
I think their board meeting was last night, so we need to call Pedro and see if he got any feedback. On the ordinance, cause we sent that to them to review as well.
Anybody know anything else, do we need to go through this? I mean, I read it all and saw we're relabeled.
Like that just was provided to show the context of how we got to that summary memo and some decisions that were made.
Well, I think it was good to go through it because it three. Worked everything, I want to see what we've done, and it. We can look at it and go, oh yeah, you know, the Fed we go through. Um, but yeah, I do remember we were talking markets were okay, but nobody really wanted the markets, cause they think it's kind of tacky.
I remember the discussion being that the connotation of the markets was not great, so if we wanted to keep that use, we should rename it as.
Exactly. Staff reports, anybody have anything on there? How did we get into, did, nobody knew they were coming to do the super, or how did they come and do that on Super Bowl, did they? Somebody flagged Mintern somewhere along the line?
I know.
Did you hear about the bison?
The bison was getting his picture taken.
They brought some artist who does photography, some, if you're in around Dale has it in a gallery or something. Brought a bison to Mintern. Bison in the front yard of the Eagle River Inn, and then took it into the saloon.
Okay.
Those pictures.
Yeah, and then he's down by the cemetery bridge too, is that where I heard, yeah, that's where.
Tierney told me about it.
Okay, I did not hear about that.
Yeah, hold on, bison.
But I don't think they called anybody, uh they may have called the saloon, but Tierney didn't know he was coming for her yard.
Right.
You know what it's for, it was, it was for art?
Yes, some photographer, some, but like a big old bison.
Can you, I mean, and I said, she said, then they went to the saloon, I said, they went in the saloon? I'm like, I can't imagine.
How did they get it?
And she said, yes, now maybe she wasn't correct, maybe it just stood outside, but she said. Yeah, we had a bison in town.
Um I would like to expand on the letter in there for the historic preservation grant, I had a meeting with Dr. Blilling. Last week, um she gave me kind of a bigger description than that letter states. Uh so our, there were eleven applicants, um three got full funding, three got put on the waitlist, kind of like we did. Um apparently, not apparently, they get uh they split their funding between federal government and the state historical office from state. And because the federal government congress is not passed an actual budget, just resolutions continuing the budget, they have only received forty three percent of their normal funding. Um they anticipate that they will get more funding before September thirtieth, and if they do, we will then get our funding for our grant. Uh and that will just mean that we'll have to update any dates uh for the grant that was approved. Uh but if we do not, if Congress is not actually pass a budget, we do not get our funding before September thirtieth, we will need to reapply for the October cycle of the grant.
And are we first in the waitlist, or is the waitlist all even?
She didn't get that specific, I assume that it will be. They try and help as many people as they can, so I think it will probably be fairly even.
And that's to go through town and help identify a lot of the historical buildings, and that's right, yeah. Survey has to be turned over by the twenty second, twenty second, maybe we haven't done it yet. I've done it yet, and but I'm coming to meetings, I will get to it this week. I met thirty eight last time. And I'm getting, I know I'm getting some back, cause Madison told me some of the paper ones haven't been returned. Sixty seven, and I um. Told and reminded them, and they said they drop them off by me if that's okay by you, and then I'll just bring them.
I said, they're all anonymous, and I figured how I get them, just that I get them.
I know, but I think might, that might have been holding back, because. On the paper, you gotta bring it to the office and then they know who's handing it, I suggested to Madison next time out here, where we have only two out, top box, exactly, a drop box. I don't know how many more papers will come in, but I mean, I know I handed out about eight. And what, and then mine will come on paper.
I think I've read fifteen copies, and there's only a couple left on the table, so I think other people picked up some copies.
But it, it does say anonymous, but then it says you have to deliver it to the town and, you know. So I said that to Madison Monday night, could we, next time, let's think about doing the drop box, I'm happy to make one, it's no big thing.
Would be hard for me to do it, it's just all of our outreach, public outreach is said, drop it by town.
You're paid too well to make a drop box.
To change the uh.
And I could be retired.
This is true, you will be retired.
Okay, so now, here's what happens.
Let's get, let's get through the meeting and.
And nobody's out in my lowland, so staff reports, we've talked about for a little bit. So. March eleventh meeting is gone, the meeting you need to come to is tomorrow night.
You don't have to.
Well, not as the commissioner, but as yourself, that's what I mean. That's when your blocks will be.
Okay, I'll, I'll come to that.
And then the next one is um March twenty first, that far further ahead, and that is from. The.
Six hundred pound on down, so eight hundred block on down.
Eight hundred block on down. Um planning commission meeting, March twenty seven, who's gonna be here, anybody, everybody?
I'm gonna be here.
I'm here.
As long as I, as long as I get back on planning commission.
Your term doesn't end until March thirty first, so.
Oh.
I, yes.
April tenth is the next one. I will be here.
Yeah, like Matt. Like Madison said.
No, I want positive, yes, I will be here. I mean.
Uh you know, I might just cover the hell up, I'm just kidding.
And how many? But Jeff hasn't done his full application.
No, he submitted a letter of interest, and I said, thank you, I need you to fill out this application, so. He does, I will then have three with a potential fourth, depending on she. He does, I will then have three with a potential fourth depending on if she applies.
Who's the three? I know you told me, but.
Trace, you, Sage, and Jeff are the three that are up for renewal.
And who put in somewhere?
You, Daryl Weger, potentially Jeff, and then potentially Tracy Anderson.
Yeah, that other lady.
We haven't heard from Sage.
Yeah, Sage does not express interest to me, which is why I didn't include her in that, but.
I think she has other plans.
I don't know.
I'm gonna find out as long as your deadline, right?
Okay. So may I have a motion?
My motion to. Those injured tonight's planning.
And have a second.
I second.
All in favor. Now, back to the others.